I will start by reading our vision statement. It's October 23rd, 2020. And the Ashland Public Schools cultivates the academic and social emotional growth of each student through supportive collaborative innovative and challenging environment. Students will develop into self motivated resilient lifelong learners who embrace their role as responsible contributors to a global community. It does not still look like we are being recorded by WACA cable TV, but I think we are recording it ourselves. Hopefully folks will be able to watch it. Some other time, I will take roll call with the school committee members and just ask that you're all. Say that you're okay with the order of business. It's the same order of business that we've been doing every Friday with our COVID check in. So Paul Kendall.
Here, yes.
Aaron Williams.
Hearing, yes.
Mark Terry.
You're in, yes.
Kathy Bates.
Here and yes.
Okay, so Jim, I'm gonna first, I guess I'll see, I'll ask if there's anybody here from the public that would like to give comment. And then seeing none, hearing none, I'll turn it over to you, Jim, for the COVID update.
Okay, this will be a combination of me and Ed as always, and Audrey, if she jumps on, I haven't seen if she's jumped on yet. It's gonna be a wild ride. I think that's the easiest way to explain how we're going to navigate the next. Four to six weeks anyway, in terms of. Numbers of cases within the Commonwealth, but also locally and how we're going to be dealing with those in the schools. And and I want to reiterate, as we've stated numerous times on this call, but in our general meetings as well, that the. Data from the Department of Public Health that's posted, which is now on Thursdays, just so you know, it's not Wednesdays. Is one piece of data that we use to help guide. The decisions to move between models of learning. So currently we're in the hybrid. I am, we'll show the dashboard in a minute. I'm recommending we stay in the hybrid model. Yes, we had a tremendous increase in incidents per 100,000. And an increase in our positivity rate, but what Ed and I will explain is that we we had a cluster of. Of two families that led to and has led to. There were 19 folks. Now it's up to what 13, Ed?
14.
14 that tested positive within that 19. So the numbers that you will see. And there were obviously a couple of our community members in the schools, but they've been isolated since last week. So that's just one thing. So the commissioner has reiterated over and over that even if your district goes into a red or your community goes into a red. That they want to see three weeks of data, three weeks of the reporting, which is four weeks of data. In the red in order to make that decision. What I say is that we will act in the best interest of our our community. Locally and not necessarily follow Desi's guidelines, even though we have to report to them and tell them that. If we were going into a different model, that that's what we're doing. I think they're. They're trying to be consistent across the Commonwealth with regard to, you could see a spike one week and the next week it goes down. We anticipated being in the red this week based on last week's data. We knew that. And that so it's not of shock to me, wasn't of shock to Ed. So without further ado, let me just share the. Why is it not showing? It's odd. Give me a second. It's not allowing my, for some reason, I don't know if Zoom made a change. It's not letting me share the. My screen. This has never happened.
You want to make me a co-host, I can bring it up.
Okay, please. Yeah, I'm going to. And I can't minimize the screen because I'm recording. That's great. Kendall. Thanks, Paul. Yeah, I don't know why. Won't let me share.
Letting him share.
I know, that's great. Yeah.
Good.
Paul uses it more than I do now, so.
Problems between the chair and the keyboard typically, Ben.
Fair enough. So as you can see. Our our cases per 100,000 this week is up to 8.52. Again, the states has this as at 11.11. Again, where our numbers are. As of yesterday morning at 7:00 AM, when Ed and I go through the report and we we publish it. Ed, did you determine they're still using the same Saturday to Sunday?
They are, yes.
Yeah, even though they're reporting it on Thursdays. What they're trying to do with the reporting on Thursdays is identify if there were. Clusters within, you know, assisted living, nursing homes, et cetera. So that's why they're they're publishing it now on Thursdays and trying to also clean up some of the data for those who have maybe tested more than once. And how that impacts the overall positivity rate. So you'll see we had a slight increase. We have right now currently 29, well, more than that now because Ed just told me this morning we had a couple more. But a couple of cases will be coming off next week as well. 29 open cases. You'll notice there were a total of six school age children. Now it's seven. Is that right, Ed? We had one more we added this morning.
Correct.
But again, all of those students, it really goes back to the the two incidents that we were talking about, the cluster. But then we also have the incident two weeks ago. Where we had, we shut down the high school and the middle school for. Remote learning for that week, so we could contact trace the 20 plus individuals. There were a couple of cases out of that which are represented here as well. Those cases should be coming off next week. In terms of our 14 day rolling average, so.
So Jim.
Yeah.
Guys, I want to correct one thing. So in total, right now, everybody, we have six school age children, but one of those six does not go to Ashland Schools.
Great, thanks, Ed. Yeah, appreciate it. Yep. And then, as you can see, you know, that. If we're looking strictly just at the per 100,000, it's over the seven, it would put us in the red. But that being in our positivity rate is, I can't read, it's small on my screen, Paul, but. 2.2. So.
You're talking about Ashland's positivity rate?
Yeah, I can't.
Remember, we were never using that.
No, I know. I'm just, I'm just sharing the data. The state positivity rate is, is, I can't read it, it's 1 point. It's too small, but. At 1.7?
Oh, the positivity rate?
Yeah.
This week is 1.56.
Okay, so so that number falls within.
2.4, sorry.
Okay. So again, we're just seeing an increase across the board. If you look then at the athletics component. You know, we'll see, I think all of our. TVL schools, districts saw an increase as well in in positivity cases. We are playing Medway this weekend. I talked to Armin Pyers, the superintendent, last night after the results came out and said. Is this impacting schools? And they're in the yellow. And he said, no, we anticipate fully that. That we're just same business as normal as well as Ashland would be. So it is senior weekend. At Ashland, I believe. Is that right, Mr. Marks?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so I don't see any reason for us to shift away from from the athletics and the protocols that he's put into place. And Medway is feeling the same way, at least at the superintendent level. I don't know if you've had that same conversation, Stephen, at the athletic director's level. But that's, that's where we are today. And I would just recommend that we maintain the status quo. I I want to be clear with the community, and I have it in some written communication, that. There were questions with regard to why we didn't shut down Mindes when we knew, when we found out we had a positive case. In the Mindes community, and the short answer is that we were able to easily identify and track the the close contacts. Whereas at the middle and high school, when when we got that information on that holiday, Monday, we we couldn't do that. We had well over 20 individuals that we had to make sure that we were connecting with and it crossed two buildings and it crossed two cohorts. So that's the reason why we did that, and I'm glad we did, because Ed, I think we, I don't think we had any, you know, additional worries about contacts after that. So.
Correct.
So that's the, that's the story this week. And, you know, like I said, I think it's going to become a very interesting few weeks for us.
What sports are we playing midway?
We have field hockey, boys soccer, girls soccer, and cross country.
Okay, um. Steve, have you, so I just happened to be reading the Metro US Daily News this morning and saw a picture of a cross country meet. Kid from Milford won, but the runners don't really have their masks on. The kids that are cheering them on don't have their masks on correctly. Like, what, is there any discussion about compliance for our students? Around that, and it's the first, like, you know, photographic evidence I've seen. And just wondering like what the discussions are, and then also with hockey being paused for two weeks in Massachusetts, is the MIA discussing not having hockey this winter?
Well, first, in terms of the the pictures and and things like that, a lot of that has to do with who's allowed at the events. And remember, in the TVL, we don't have any student fans. We are starting, this is our first week of having adult spectators. We will have event staff, as will all the other TVL schools, making sure that any spectator is following protocols. In terms of the athletes, there are modifications that the MIA made to each sport. And one of the modifications for cross country is that if you have space between you and another runner, you can pull your mask down. If you're close to another runner, you have to pull your mask back up. So that's why you might see some pictures. That look like that. In terms of hockey, yes, the MIA is having a number of conversations for winter sports. We're hoping to get all that information within the next, I'd say, two to three weeks.
Thanks.
Sure.
Kim or Ed, could you just, I think you may have, you may have said this in passing, but I guess just to be clear on it, how many of the. If any, are the cases that we're talking about now being spread by people who are actually in the community or in the schools? Meaning, yeah, my understanding is that this big cluster, you talk about the 13 or 14. Was a group that was all traveling together and contracted outside of the Commonwealth or outside of Ashland. I just want to, I guess, make sure that that's accurate, and then get a sense of their different pockets. Are those sort of, what's the source of those? We can understand whether there's really a risk to the community.
So obviously, so most of you know, we had a group of 19 that we started getting some positive results. We realized it was a cluster, it was a few families that got together over a weekend. We immediately put anybody that was positive into isolation and all of their contacts into quarantine. So some of, a couple of those people have come out of isolation now, but we still have some people, some of those original contacts are testing positive. But for the school age, so school age in national public schools, we have five positive. Three of those are part of that cluster event.
And just to clarify that, those folks, though, did not, they contracted the disease in the first circumstance outside of the community.
That is correct. That is correct.
And so the other, there are couples of students who did contract it through other means, which is either not identified or.
Right, one of them that I spoke to has no idea. You know, can't, we can't trace it back to anything.
And I think Ed and Jim, just because I've heard people say things that could be construed publicly otherwise. All of your contact tracing, everything, there's been no evidence of any spread within the schools, right?
That is correct.
External impacting us indirectly because we need to make changes or do things because of external events.
Right, and I also want to let you know one, one other thing that Audrey and I started doing just to make sure we don't miss anything. When we get a new case in now, what we, what I do and what Audrey does is we, my first stop now is I go to iPass. And I don't look the student up by name. I actually search by address. In the event I have a student with a different last name than a positive adult. So we're, we're going down to that level. So I run addresses. And I, and that way I make sure, because we've already seen that a couple of times, oh, wait a minute, this potentially could be a different last name. So we're, we're searching down to that level before we, and then going from there.
Yeah. To your point, though, Paul, too, if we were to just segregate the the data, like really pull it out or disaggregate the data, you would notice that. A lot of the cases in the, in the quarantines have really resulted in probably two incidents, right? We had a, we had the the 19 recently because of a trip outside of the state. And then we also had some youth sports. That that started the ball rolling, if you will, a couple of weeks ago. So. But nothing inside of the school system that we have been able to identify or there's been any transmission.
Yeah, and I just want to thank Ed and Audrey and all the people doing the contact tracing, because, you know, I hear people and I've talked to people that say. Well, what number is it that we're gonna make a, make a change? And and the answer is. There is no number, right? And it's all about the the hard work that they're doing to give us guidance on the confidence that they have. Isolated the appropriate people so that there's not a risk of of opening schools. And so, so thank you. It's only because of that hard work, otherwise we'd be flying blind and and have to make choices. Based off just, you know, data that can be misleading. So I appreciate that.
And the other thing, too, Paul and everybody, I just want to make sure the public knows, if they have any questions, we have a COVID hotline. It's 508-532-7900. You know, we will give them the answers. You know, we don't, this is full open disclosure. We're letting people know what's going on, and we drill down those numbers.
Yeah, and and just an FYI to the to the group. We're probably, as a policy subcommittee, going to look at a COVID related travel policy. And be bringing that to the group. I had a brief conversation with Jim, Ed, and Audrey just about what they would like to see in that. So we'll be trying to craft something that will better protect our ability to stay open. And and set clear expectations for both our staff and our families. So. Going to start to work on that and have that hopefully before Thanksgiving. And I don't know when we should probably, Jim, start talking in this group about. Whether we do anything for the week following Thanksgiving or not.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just briefly. Comment that I've actually reached out to superintendent's organization, and I've probably received well over 50 responses from superintendents. And there are only two districts that are even contemplating at this point in time doing anything. With regard to after the Thanksgiving break. The commissioner, again, has been clear, but again, I'm not necessarily taking all direction right now from the Department of Ed. That they want people in school. And that being said. You know, we, we will do what's best for our our community, and I trust the board will, that's how you've always acted and will continue to act in such a manner. But that currently, I think there are only two districts that are. In my list serve that are even considering. Shutting down, going remote only after, so.
Yeah, as the, if it's something we would consider, we should probably start talking about it earlier.
Make sure. Absolutely earlier. Yep, agreed.
Because if we, if we always see these spikes after holiday breaks or anything like that, I mean, that one's probably the largest. Risk factor from a, from that perspective, right? So.
Yeah, and I think the college kids, you know, for the most part are coming home and staying home. And with the exception of a few. That will go back and, yeah, so, so, yeah, we'll have to have a further discussion. I'll continue to collect that data. But that's where we are for the week.
Yeah, for the policy subcommittee, I, I, there's a thread going around on the MASC about communities that have already. Drafted these policies or are considering them. So if you, if you do consider a policy and you don't want to reinvent the wheel, or at least take a look at what. Work is already out there. Either check the MASC website if if you want, or I can forward to you what I've seen to the policy committee.
If you, if you have, then that'll, you know, I'm always willing. But I don't have to start from scratch with this one, then that's great.
Sure, I will do that.
Paul, do you know, do you guys know when you might want to meet or you wanted to do that offline?
I'll, I'll, I have to write it too, so.
Well, yeah, we'll, we'll do it offline, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Any further questions for us?
I have a quick question, I think. It's quick about the, just the sports, you know, down in the chart, Tri Valley League, the red bar for Holliston. Stephen, have they been in the red like that for a few weeks now? And when do we play them? And are we concerned about playing them?
Yeah, they've, they've been in the red, but again, a lot of that was isolated to the nursing homes. So that's why they, there's been no change in terms of anything at their, at their school. So no, we're not concerned at this point.
All right, great, thanks.
Sure.
And I guess just something, I believe I know the answer to this, Stephen, but. We made the decision to allow the spectators before all this happened, right? And you, we made the wise decision to not start it right away. I'm assuming we're all, Ed, Jim, yourself, still comfortable. With proceeding with that addition of spectators.
I am, you know, again, I think it goes back to, am I comfortable with our process and our protocols? And I am. I I've been very impressed with, with, you know, Stephen and the TVL ADs, but also when I walk into the schools. You know, Mike and I are in there daily and and seeing how people are focused on our protocols and Ed and and Audrey, and I feel really comfortable. You know, if you were talking to me about youth hockey, I'd say no. So, but, but yeah, I'm comfortable.
And and I assume, Stephen, you're, you're going to be there and and be very diligent at seeing how it goes and making sure people are following the rules.
Yep, we're at everything.
Any other questions or comments? And anything else that you need to share, Jim, or want to share?
Nope, I'm good. I will be, again, I will be sending an email out this morning with with our data. And I will again remind folks about their responsibility within our community to. You know, conduct themselves appropriately with regard to mask wearing, hygiene, hand washing, sanitizing, physical distancing, et cetera. The only way we are going to stay open is if the community does its part, and that's all I can say. Because we could get some, you know, events that impact our schools with families and kids, and then. We've been fortunate, Ned will tell you, we've been fortunate that even this week, that we, it's, it was a Monday, Tuesday, you know, incident cohort. So, I mean, we've been, we've been really fortunate with our groupings and and the process that we've taken. And we've had that Wednesday in between for an additional cleaning. We've done a really good job with that, but if this had occurred on a Thursday. You know, you know, at least our protocols are good, but we just, we're just begging, I'm begging people to do the right thing, I guess.
And I just want to say, you know, not just Audrey, but we, you guys, big kudos to the school nurses. They're on top of this and just.
Honestly.
And the communication with all of us is really what's helping us. They're phenomenal.
Yeah. That's usually the, one of the stops I make every time we go into the schools. I go to the nurses first. Or during the loop, because they need that full support, too. They're making additional calls that you can't imagine. And it's. So.
Ed, I might be out of the loop on this because my kids aren't little, but what's the town's plan for Halloween, or is there one, or what do you recommend? We're coming right up on that, yeah.
Yeah, so that was part of a Board of Health discussion. What's been happening, we now have it on our website, some good practice tips for Halloween. And Ashley Place and Beth Reynolds, every day are sending out a different blast about Halloween and safety tips. Obviously, you know, the distancing, keep masks on. There's a bunch of different ideas. And but we're also telling people, you know, some adults that have called me, you know, I've got some health problems. I don't know if I want kids at my house. Well, like, okay, you know what, for that short period of time, keep your lights off so kids don't come to your house. And, you know, you don't have to open your door. You know, or just stick a bucket out in the front or whatever. Yeah, but there's been no, we're not gonna, it's gonna move forward like most cities and towns.
It's a platter, Ed, right? It's not a bucket?
A platter.
I will make sure I reference, Ed, some of Michael Herbert's. Emails to the community as well in my communication today, as well as the COVID hotline.
Sure.
So my email this week will just be focused on that specifically, not put all the other minutia that typically goes in the the weekly emails, so.
Yeah, and and also, you know, just so, you know, I've kind of been looking at the numbers already for next week. We'll be read again next week based on what I'm seeing.
Yep.
So we'll be read two weeks in a row.
Because of the way the numbers fell this week, those, those cases of that cluster, right?
Correct.
Yeah, and and just to reiterate what Jim said, the, while the guidance says you want, you want, you want to make choices or changes based on three weeks worth of data. It also doesn't mean we have to make a change based on three weeks worth of data. We're still gonna, you know, do what we think is best based on the information we have, so.
And to Paul's point, not to lengthen the meeting, but the, I think Destiny and DPH came out with a little bit of a clarification even on that yesterday. Saying that you also have to consider the impact on the schools.
Correct.
So while we're red, the impact on the schools thus far in terms of any transmission has been nonexistent. Obviously, it's impacted our operations in different ways, but, you know, I think that's the way we've been thinking about it anyway, but it's also good to see.
Yeah, they're taking our approach. So I, I, I give.
You're next in line, Jim.
No, I don't know.
Did them credit for taking, taking early?
Negative.
Hey, Jim, I don't know if Audrey, Audrey has joined, so I don't know if she had anything she wanted to add to what you were saying.
Yeah, Audrey, anything that you want to report out this week or? We started at 7:30 again, I think. We're, we're back, we're on the 7:30 train.
Sorry about that.
No worries.
I give you kudos, Audrey.
And and the rest of the nurses.
Thank you. Lots of phone calls, lots of follow up. Lots of education, questions.
Lots of questions. Well, these last couple of weeks have definitely been an example of, you know, the metric might say one thing, but there's a reason why we're breaking it. And it could lead to a different result. So hopefully, the community is, is. Getting access to these conversations somehow with an understanding, because a lot of the questions that I get anyway are, you know, why are you doing this if you said that? And we've said this at every single meeting pretty much, but just to reiterate, now we have a couple of concrete examples over the last couple of weeks. And that's the way that we'll continue to move forward. So unless anybody has any other questions for Jim or anybody on the task force or comments, we can move to adjourn.
Go move.
Yeah. All in favor, Paul?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Kathy?
Hi.
Karen?
Hi.
An I for me. Have a great weekend, everybody. Thank you for all you're doing.
Thanks.
Thanks, everybody.
Waka, I will send over the recording of this if if you want to put that online somehow.
Yeah, no, um.
Great, Alice, I didn't know who it was. That's why I said Waka.
Oh, no, that's fine. Yeah, we didn't realize it was starting at 7:30.
I had sent the message to Barbara, but that's okay.
Yeah, I just texted her. She's like, oh, I never saw it.
Okay, no worries.
Every week, though, now.
7:30 now.
Okay.
Just because we have other meetings that we've been running into, so.
Okay, I will let her know. I'll send you a Dropbox link, so you can send that to me.
Great, sounds good. Yep, thank you.
All right, bye.
See you later.
Thanks, Laura.
Bye, Jim. Have a good weekend.